We could be in the mix for approaching state permits. And we would be in the mix with Austin and Houston. And so we'd make it in the mix to be able to have a little state permit here. And they go with the, I believe, every three years. The Strickland Fire Club has one in the Rio Grande Valley and Austin. And so we are going to kind of bid for that Austin. Because permanent here also, your permit will take us to Austin for the rest of the year. And so that's going to happen, I believe, 2021 is going to happen. Maybe first step now. But along with that, the TV fields, the dugouts get rebuilt. And there are some musicals that you guys are pretty good at. Just for the energy park, there's an old play that's probably moving. It gets a lot of energy park destroyers. The Strickland Systems also getting repaired. And the hindernets are getting repaired as well. We've got a roller to help it off course. And Victor Science is in charge of that. Commissioned the roller to get out there and level out some of the curways. So we love this state today. There's been a lot of work done by the parks guys. And well, actually, it's all a couple of works. We've got them all. We went through a lot of them. They're putting a lot of their hands together and getting this stuff done. Victor reminds me of Victor Science and whatnot. There's a lot of work out there. Also want to thank the law enforcement for presenting their custody. So it's been a lot of work. And I just want to let you guys know that we're going to be working on the parks. I think it's going to look better if we work on it. The Silco project. We had last year, in March and April, we completed the Silco project. There were some streets that we wanted to talk to our vendor about. And he spent a step up engineering. Went out there and drove it. Closed construction to do the work. And I spent an hour and a half, almost two hours, I think it was, to follow the streets. And we were thinking that the government would be needing more work or need to be more than you. But as we looked at the streets and as he showed us what they needed, marketing, you know, the Silco projects would like to spec. And what we asked them to do, they did. It's just, you know, if you have a street that is a very good section and goes to a section that has more alligators and needs more work, all the spec kind of doesn't sit well with that other section. And so that was a lot of the parts where we maybe got some rock in there sometimes. They did use a little bit of oil. They're not good with alligators or tracks. But then sometimes the rock would come off, or sometimes the rock actually goes down. So all in all, they did need their job spec. But we wanted to go through the summer. And then we're going to be able to bring them down here and look at it. And we looked at all those. Tell us, give us a pointer on our next RFP, what we may be wanting to be looking at. And I think this RFP, when it got started, it was a year and a half before we were able to combine some of the same type of streets and the same size I can get versus the same world. So we're going to be looking at a different way to do that. We would order to get additional Silco money. There's, I'm going to be bringing you guys probably some different options on how to best utilize the Silco money we have. We probably want to do less streets, but maybe do a few streets that need some more building. Maybe with a different sized rock, a second building. And there may be some replacements, or we may do a little bit of, I just want to utilize that second batch of Silco money differently based on what we really need. That's why we're bringing that for you guys. The other thing is, we started a compliance project to make sure that, we say compliance with all the permits and any kind of licenses that we have. So we started to have a couple of works. And it's just something that we should be doing and we are going to be doing now. It's our public works. So now we're going to have a master list. Any of the partners or permits or any kind of thing like that that we need to see. We're going to extend that to certifications that staff will need for certain areas like water, plumbing, water, things of that sort. So that's a project that we work. And another thing I did just on here is we are going to have a multi-complex. We're going to have it on our website. We're going to be following what Claremont has. They put a lot of time and thought into how they, when they open. We're following, but they do base on, they have some March 8th, that's through break. March 8th will be the first day. So we'll catch those two weeks from the 8th all the way to 24th. And then since school is still going on, there'll be a break until April 37th. We'll catch that meeting on the 27th through 28th. May the 4th and 5th, 11th and 12th, 19th, and then the last week, May 24th. And then the full day operation will be a little bit longer. So the schedule will, most will be posted here in the next couple of days. Our opening, we'll get some advertising out there, what the guns are, and we're going to be open. That's going to be out there for everybody to see. The last thing I have here is on the post ready to go, and that's going to be February the 25th, 10:00 AM, City Council meetings. So you guys that have a hundred percent of people out there that are running in the country or, that's what I'm going to do.
And then the item number four, discuss consider an act upon authorizing zip cameras for conditioning or RFP or inactive savings to form a contract for energy or water conservation or usage measures in which estimated savings, utility cost savings, increase in billable revenues or decrease in meter access resulting from the measures is subject to guarantee to offset the cost of the energy or water preservation or usage measures over a specified period.
Last, we have former services, we've created, you guys, for energy savings from contracts. And they give all the presentation. And they give them in. And there's some areas that we could have, we could have some savings. And they fall under the chapter 302 of energy savings. Along the story that is, if we do, if they find an improvement, we can contract that we can, an energy savings improvement, all by, you know, we're guaranteeing that the cost of that improvement will pay itself on the energy savings or the savings. And it is regulated by the recovery code. We feel that there is potential, either the water metering that we have, or even our air conditioning we just got to see more and make. And the company feels that there is potential there that wasn't qualified yet. So what we could contract individuals, of all, there's lots, I've been allowed just to contract to do that. Rather, doing our PUC, you know, the rollers out there for the company, or services will probably, you know, maybe possibility of qualifications. So I'm asking for you guys to override this, to provide information to our PUC for that. So we can start the process of trying to use energy savings and go to the cost of those.
The only thing I noticed just recently is that on the very first page, we said that response by 3:00 PM timing didn't actually put in who's it going to or the address. So that needs to be updated before we send it out.
Yeah, this is the grant.
Okay. Well, yeah. We approved it, I was like, right.
Right.
Yeah. No. I'm going to make a motion to you, the city manager, submission of RFP for energy savings project for energy or water conservation or usage measures in which estimated savings, utility cost savings, increase in billable revenues or decrease in meter access resulting from the measures is subject to guarantee to offset the cost of energy or water conservation or usage measures over the specified period.
Item number five, discuss consider an act upon people within 70 minutes for the January 8th, 2019, 70 minutes for the January 15th, 2019, and 70 minutes for the January 2nd, 2019. Mr. Moore, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Mayor, I'd like to move for approval of city council minutes for the January 8th, 2019 city council meeting, and minutes for the January 15th, 2019 city council minutes for the January 22nd, 2019 council meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Prose, same side. Motion stands as stated. Agenda item number six, consider an act upon establishment, dissolution, appointments, reappointments, removals, and/or term clarifications of membership for the City of Alice Board's Commissions and Committees.
Mayor, we have some, a couple of individuals that were interested in serving in boards. We include their information in your packet. And available for now is the Chief Alice Beautiful Commission. We have Victoria Dominguez who resides here in Alice, and the once Elise who also resides here in Alice. And they were there for your consideration, to those considerations to this board.
Yeah, just real quick, for Ms. Victoria, I know that she's very active, but in the area of interest, she didn't highlight anything. Has anybody talked to her to see if this is one of the areas that she is interested in?
Yeah, she's being recruited.
Oh, she's being recruited?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I just had noticed that it wasn't highlighted for that specific, for more. So I wanted to make sure.
The GAD group is really active in seeking more members because we need more hands. So they're doing a great job.
Mr. Chris? Ms. Castle? Mr. Mulligan? Okay. I'll entertain a motion at this time.
You're on with the appointment placement of once Elise and Victoria Dominguez to the Alice Beautiful Committee.
Can I get a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Prose, same side. Thank you. Agenda item number seven, discuss consider an act upon the two bids received for lease and resale of Old Boys and Girls Club located at 3301 Old Kingsville Road, Alice, Texas.
Mayor, on this agenda, talking to our city attorney, the nature of Athena, involved in real estate, in the fact that we have posted on our minutes, they go to go and affect the fact of our request. And the city attorney would request we go to give them the question.
It's a circuit of 57, 107, 155, 072.
The time is now 6:48. Counselor, please. Time is now 7:21, and we are back in session. We will continue on with agenda item number seven, discuss consider an act upon the two bids received for lease and resale of Old Boys and Girls Club located at 3301 Old Kingsville Road, Alice, Texas.
Mayor, at this time, I think there's one motion you need.
All in favor? Agenda item number eight, discuss consider an act upon authorizing the city manager to execute and submit Texas Water Development Board documents for wastewater infrastructure in the next project.
Mayor, we have Barbara, our grant administrator, going to the next three items. And we need to go.
Yes, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. February 5th, we were notified by Texas Water Development Board that in order to keep our wastewater project in their system, we would need to submit another project information form on the 5th, which we did last year in February. But that's just part of their process to keep the project in the system. And we've been working with Robert Pieta from LND. We've been working with a financial advisor, a bond counsel, in preparing the loan application. And we will be bringing that to your future meeting. We're also working to prepare a packet requesting that Texas Water Development Board authorize us to use force account for part of the wastewater infrastructure portion of this project. We're proposing to use the special projects crew to do 10,000 to 12,000, many of feet of the wastewater infrastructure portion. The other portion of this project is the addition of water meters. We've added that. So right now, the total project is comprised of about 22,975 meter feet of wastewater collection system lines, replacing approximately 68 work manholes, replacing all the service lines, and installing approximately 5,800 water meters, ranging in size from 5 inches to 6 inches, meter boxes and other items. The project information form on PIP is due next Friday, March 1st. The process after that is that Texas Water Development Board will take all the PIPs they get and evaluate the projects and publish a draft intended use plan in early summer. And there's a comment period. So once we see how we've ranked, we can comment on our project, or anyone can. And then generally in August, Texas Water Development Board will then adopt the final intended use plan. And then send out invitations to apply for financial assistance to those who rank the highest on the priority list. And those invitations usually come out in September. And if you're not invited, first round, the second round usually comes out in October or November. So tonight, we're asking you to authorize us to submit the PIP to keep the wastewater project in their system.
Counsel, any questions? Mr. Mulligan?
No question.
Mr. Chris? Mr. Burke?
Another question.
Agenda item number eight, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to move for the approval for the submission of the Texas Water Development Board document for wastewater infrastructure improvements within the City of Alice project.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Prose, same side. Motion stands as stated. Agenda item number nine, discuss consider an act upon authorizing the city manager to execute and submit Texas Water Development Board a project information form for phase two of the groundwater project.
Mayor and Council, this is the same process, but this is for our groundwater project, which we've already submitted the loan application for. And this is for phase two. Phase one was the loan application for $5.5 million for design and construction of one test well and one production well, design of the Brackish D-South plant, and permitting of the well and concentrate discharge. Phase two, which we will include in this PIP, is approximately $12,633,900 for the construction of a second production well, construction of the 3.0 NGD Brackish D-South plant and related facilities, construction phase engineering. And again, on this project, we've been working with our bond counsel and our financial advisor and the engineering firm, Norris Real. And the same process, in order to keep this project in their system, we're asking your authorization to submit this PIP.
And also, keep in mind that on phase two with the $12.6 million, if thing is one in the test well, everything works out, you know, then we would still, we would consider continuing on phase two. What the five point, phase one is a $5.5 million, which has a potential, or the $1.3 million of loan forgiveness. We don't know what the loan forgiveness, if there's going to be any, we think they go up from Texas Water Development Board. We just don't have that number yet. But this is a preliminary stages of getting that process started.
Here's the letter about loan forgiveness on phase four.
Okay, yeah. $1.47, $1.4 million. And also to consider on the first phase one that we talked about before, just to reiterate, if we do a test well, and the test well with loan forgiveness, it's kind of paying for that test well. And if the water quality is, if the dissolved solids are too high, and it's not going to work, we still have the additional money that we can use for other water improvements to our distribution system. So even if something goes wrong with that, we still have money that we can certainly use somewhere else. It's not just going to go some, you know, go to waste or have to give it back. But, you know, our water distribution system needs work. It could be there anyway. But we just, we need to get started on the process for the, for the phase two if we want to pursue it at a later time.
And we're hoping that we finished another round of responses to their comments on our loan application. So we're hoping they take the loan application to their board next month for approving the proposal.
Counsel, any questions? Ms. Castle? No questions? Mr. Burke?
Yeah.
Mr. Chris?
I just appreciate this coming forward now to get in the, in the process. I know that, that in turn, when people start looking at this, it is a 17, an $18 million project, but this is the type of stuff that we have to do for our citizens. And this is infrastructure improvements, this is secondary water sources. So these are things that we're starting the process on now that we won't see the results set of for years and years to come. It's not like this is going to happen next year. So keep in mind that even though we apply for these, that I'm talking to our public, that we apply for these or that we submit these, this is a process that we have to do in order to take care of the general public. It is big numbers, but when we look at types of projects like these, in order to get everything done, we need hundreds of millions of dollars to do everything that the citizens want. So these are small steps that we're taking, that y'all are taking and presenting to us to approve in order to make the quality of life better as a whole. So just keep that in mind when you see numbers like this, that these are just small, these are pennies when it comes to infrastructure. Yes, when it comes to other projects, it's a huge deal, but this is, this is about 10% of what we need in order to do everything.
Mr. Mulligan?
I just, Mr. Chris is absolutely correct. We're dealing with 50-year-old infrastructure, and we have a lot of residents in our area, and our water superintendent knows daily, this is something that, yes, the number's huge, but the problems are bigger. And we need to provide our citizens with the service that we promised them. So Counsel, I'll entertain a motion at this time. Are there any further questions?
Move for approval submission of Texas Water Development Board project information form for phase two of the groundwater project. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Prose, same side. Motion stands as stated.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mulligan. Agenda item number 10, discuss consider and act upon adopting a resolution authorizing the submittal of justice assistance grant, JAG, application number 3769101, replacing in-car mobile cameras for the traffic and patrol division and for the interdiction officer, designating the city manager as the city's authorized official with the authority to apply for, accept, reject, alter, or terminate a grant on behalf of the city, providing assurance that in the event of loss or misuse of grant funds, that the city will return all funds to the Criminal Justice Division of the Governor's Office.
Mayor and Council, last year, we brought this same project to you. And when we went to co-sign Council of Governments Public Policy Perfection Committee meetings and presented our project, we were recommended for funding at a level where we could purchase five in-car camera systems. At that time, the budget was revised, and that recommendation went to the state, the Office of the Governor's Criminal Justice Division. The project remained, and the status of the project remained that it was pending OOG review. After a couple of months of seeing that, the tenants, or Tucci and I, called the state to ask the status, and were told that the state wasn't making any awards because there's a pending lawsuit against the Office of Justice Programs with regard to a formula they have, how they allocate funds to the different states. And the state of Texas didn't make any awards. So this year, we're going to apply for the 16 again. And we have an updated quote of $99,383.04 for the 16 in-car camera systems. This is as last year, there's no required match. It's a grant, it's a reimbursement grant program. There is a maximum you can apply for, and that's set by the COG committee at $166,770 per application. When we go to present our project at the COG, they ask us if we can implement our program with fewer funds. We can say, yes, this program is scalable. So we'd like to ask your authorization to submit this application again this year under the state JAG program.
Hey, Counsel, Mr. Mulligan, if I could?
No question.
Mr. Chris?
No.
Mr. Burke?
Yeah.
Ms. Castle? Okay. I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Mayor, make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the submittal of a justice assistance grant, application number 3769101, replacing in-car mobile cameras for traffic, patrol, and for the interdiction officer, designating the city manager as the city authorized official with the authority to apply for, accept, reject, alter, and terminate a grant on behalf of the city, providing assurance that in the event of loss or misuse of grant funds, the city will return all funds to the Criminal Justice Division of the Governor's Office. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Prose, same side. Motion stands as stated.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mulligan.
Barbara?
Agenda item number 11, your status report on January 2019, month-ending financial statements and summary of funds.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So I, tonight I will be reviewing the financials for January 31st, 2019. This first slide displays the revenue for the general fund. First, I wanted to review the property tax. Through the end of January, we have received $1,382,669. This next slide discusses the property tax, but this one shows MNO and INS. And if you notice, I have three years comparison here. We're pretty much in line with last year. So I just wanted to show that comparison. Next, we'll discuss this. Next, we'll discuss the sales tax. These financials through January only include the October and November sales tax. And with those two months, we totaled $1,019,900. Now, this slide, slide on the sales tax does include October, November, and December. And this is a comparison to the budget. December's payment did come in, but that will be reflected in your February financials. And the payment was $490,768. This next slide is actually a comparison to last year. And fiscal year 19 is $674 more than fiscal year 18, despite how the chart looks. Now, between property tax, sales tax, franchise fees, and interfund transfers, the total general, general fund revenue was $3,477,863 or 29%. And by January, we should be at about 33%. Any questions on the general fund revenue?
Counsel, any questions?
Oh, you have a question? Okay. This next slide shows the expenses for each of the departments of the general fund. The general fund total expenses are at $3,777,350 or at 30%. Are there any questions on the expenses? Or do you want to come back to this?
Is there any? Questions?
Okay. This next slide is an overview of all of the funds. General fund had a loss of $299,486. Solid waste had a loss of $12,634. Utility fund was in the positive $8,024. The airport fund had a loss of $11,455. Without the general fund transfer, the loss in the airport would have been $29,545. Golf course was $173 in the positive. Without the general fund's transfer, though, the golf course would have had a loss of The hotel lotto was in the positive $9,280. And the multi-use complex had a loss of $102,800. Without the general fund transfer, though, the loss would have been $24,879. This last slide is a comparison between January 19 and January 18. Most of them were not too far off. The one that was very different was the utility fund. And we looked at some of the reasons for the differences between the years was from the water plant, the water purchases, and electricity was less this year, and also maintenance and construction, a lot of the water and sewer improvements are a lot this year compared to last year.
Counsel, any questions? Mr. Malina?
No questions.
Mr. Chris?
Well, the only one I had is going back to, coming back to general fund expenditures versus budget is, is, you know, there's, there's some small things there with, with street maintenance and so forth and so on. But if interfund transfers are a static number, how, how are we off?
On the general fund?
Yes, yes.
On the general fund, on the intertransfers outright, okay?
Yes, yeah, because it, it shows that there's, there, it were, were well over budget, not well, I mean, there's a significant number over budget on it, on interfund transfers. And if they're pretty static, how does that get so skewed from a, from the difference from a budget?
So the, the transfers going out, the expenditures, the difference is, remember the sales tax, we had decided we were going to do $10,000 towards a street improvement, $10,000 towards depreciation, if the sales tax was at a certain amount. So remember, this is only two months of sales tax.
Right.
So it's missing two months of transfers out going into these other funds. And then that should be the only reason why it was less.
Well, I guess, actually, what I'm talking about is the expenditures. So we're showing that we're actually transferring out more than what we budgeted, not less than what we budgeted. Because I know that, that whenever we hit certain things, that, that we had $10,000 for XYZ, forty, forty thousand total for three to four different projects. But we're showing that we expended out more. If you look at the slide, it would be red in the, red in the blue.
E.
E.
Oh, the...
Yeah. You see what I'm saying? Because that's, that's a static amount that we send out. We know we're sending out X number of dollars all the time, but how do we get off there?
The year-to-date budget is the blue, so that's saying if we were to split it up evenly between all the months, this is where it should be.
Oh, I'm backwards. I got you now.
Okay.
I was reading it backwards, I apologize.
That's okay.
So we're actually doing a lot better than I thought on a bunch of these other things because the...
And that's why it's less due because of the sales tax, because we do...
I know why I thought it was that way. Very good. No, that's better, even better than I thought. Perfect, we're good, yeah. Yeah. Very good.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay. Mr. Mark?
No.
Ms. Castle?
And that's the only ones with what you were thinking too. I was going over these numbers, we're off. On the sales tax, I know we have a collective, but yes, we have that on the year-to-date, we have the $1,9900 and we were budgeting it, so we're behind because we're accounting performance, but we're missing the two months.
We're missing the two months.
And then, and now since the, the first two months came in, we're going to wait and see if we...
Any budget amendments? Yeah. The first month was, yeah. You're talking about, you're talking about January numbers, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, calendar, looking at the calendar year numbers.
Oh, okay.
January, right.
Oh, okay, okay. And then we make our payment February 1st for our debt service.
Yes.
And that's why we're seeing some of these, you know?
Some of the transfers, yes, because we've already transferred out to make out those bonds. So you'll notice long ways, utility fund, even the mandatory, how to transfer out to the debt service when we need the payments the end of January. We will have another payment in August, but those payments are much smaller, those are really the interest.
And then I wanted to ask on the golf course improvement, how does that set up for, is it only allocated for, I mean?
I believe the, the revenue for the golf course improvement fund is when you go to play, you go to play golf, a portion of the fees is automatically put aside.
Trophy.
Did you speak on the trophy?
Oh, yes.
It was ready for the golf for, to build the cart pass.
Okay.
Stayed on as a disimprovement fund in general.
We purchased a mower from this fund, from this fund.
Yes.
Just I was asking, how was it set up and is that how it's...
It's supposed to be, any sort of improvements or anything that's needed, that might be a little bit more costly or maybe an improvement to the golf course?
Maintenance and, not so much operations, just for maintenance and improvements. So, yeah, at one point, we looked at purchasing like a Kubota that would have come out of here, the, the cart bond came out of here, and so, and so on, so it's for any equipment.
The extra sense.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions, Ms. Malina? No other questions, counsel?
No.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 12, discuss, consider, and act upon potential funding for a hot air balloon event, with potential funding from the hotel occupancy fund, and discuss, consider, and act upon potential dates for event. Ms. Castle, would you like to speak on your agenda item?
And this, I wanted to have, have it presented to counsel. I was invited to go to a hot air balloon proposal, to learn a little bit about this. I thought this would be a great event, to go to our citizens, for them to participate in something different. I was kind of thinking that if we could compromise with me for a Fourth of July event for citizens. This hot air balloon event is, would be, it's very detailed, there are professionals that have a big portion of the hot air balloon, and I know other cities, cities of our size have had this. And it's been successful, depending on how it's organized and, I'm trying, I wanted counsel to look this over, consider there is upfront costs. Some of these costs could be offset through sponsorships, gate fees, just different things that are planned. As far as the hot, the hotels, the hot funds, I don't know if they would qualify for the advertisement or some of that promoting an event, but I thought this would be awesome and great for our citizens, something different, something they think should have for a Fourth of July event.
Counsel, Mr. Malina?
I do have a couple of statements with the... You know, I, first off, I think, I think these are cool events, I've seen them online, I mean, online, like on TV and so forth. I've never been to one, family saw this on, on the agenda, thought it was great. However, the biggest problem I have with something like this, but first, let me say this first, hot funds can, can be used, utilized for portions of this, but very small portions of this. The biggest problem I have with this, in my opinion, is the only events that a city should ever host are elections and emergency. We're not party planners, we're not. Now, and then the idea of trying to fund something like this when we just don't have funds is hard also. Would I love to see an organization, you know, a nonprofit, a private organization, or somebody just trying to make money, bring this to us? Yes. Could we potentially fund it out of hot funds? Depending on how their application comes through. You know, if they have music and they have security, and there's a lot that plays into this. There's a lot of red tape that, when you dig in, we can fund portions of it with hot funds. But in my opinion, this isn't, this is something I'd love to see in our city, but this isn't something the city should try to run here. You know what I mean? I, I like it, I think it'd be fun, but we're not in the business of, of hosting events, you know what I mean? That falls under, you know, the, the private organizations, things like the Chamber and so forth and so on, that, that really try to draw them in. Yes, we need to get people in utilizing hot funds. Would this probably bring people in? Yes. But again, we don't even have somebody on staff that could help organize this thing right now. You know, we have everybody so spread thin that even if we hired somebody to do this, you still have to have that inner city liaison.
And this is something, we still, this is something, just, we basically wanted to see what your feeling on the council, what we thought about this, you know, because there is a possibility of still asking another organization to, to take it over and handle this. But I wanted to bring it over to our timelines, and if this is something that counsel would love to consider and move forward, we definitely could visit and meet with another organization or some, another entity, someone that would want to take the lead on it.
Yeah, and I think like what happened with the food truck thing, where somebody stepped up and from the community and stepped up and brought it forward, this is the same thing I'd like to see. Can the city support something like this? I think we back it as, as a council and as a city as a whole. But as a city to run it and organize it, I think it needs to be handed off and let somebody else take the lead. We'd love for somebody to bring it to us, like you said. I think this is a good thing to put out there, but as far as the city running it, I just can't see us, us stepping up to that role, so.
And also, we have had, I've had two phone conferences with a gentleman from Louisiana named Pat, and he organizes five of these throughout the country. And a wealth of information, talks about how much it costs to get it done, what is expected from the organizer, and what kind of revenue can be had to give me an idea. We had a conversation a couple of weeks ago, and counsel, person that I spoke was in that meeting, that was already made good in that meeting as well. We had another one today with, with Pat, just to clarify some information. And what they're, what he's looking at is, for a, a city our size, it's like a 20 balloon event. And the cost of that is about $24,000, okay? And on top of that, you have hotel rooms that you provide for the ballooners, meals for the ballooners.
The city would provide.
Yeah, or whoever's putting events together.
Yeah, the organizer of it.
Organizer. And then the propane, and then some event t-shirts or something. And so the minimum would be a $32,000 investment or expense for that. And then, of course, wherever the organizer is, and they would be able to get the gates. And a portion of, of the commercial rides, which he said the rides are about an hour, and they're about $250, but they take you up and, and you ride this balloon for an hour, wherever it lands, is really how you put it, it's an adventure. And then they do have the, the tether, so they'll go up and down, and you can see the whole city from up there, and, and then you bring it back down. Those are, those are a little bit less, less expensive. But he figured the, between the tethering and the commercial flights, anywhere between, you know, $3,000 and $8,000 is the event person's cut of that, when you add all, all that up. And I think they had one in Rockstown, he said that, that the tethering brought in about maybe $5,000 for that portion of it. Then there's sponsorships, and then, you know, the, the concession and things of that sort. He's talking about typically, the, the best way to do it is you, you have a per car fee when they enter. His idea, in a place like ours, would be probably the airport, you need, I forget whether it was 10 or 20 acres, I think he said maybe 20, that you need to be able to have the proper space. And the, the big thing is, is for it to be a break even for whoever wants to do it, whether you'll have the number of cars to command, because the gate is where you're going to make the money. And then sponsorships also. So that's kind of where he was on that. He, we also talked about the Fourth of July, you know, he likes six months in advance to plan something, and they do do all the coordinating, although there's, there's a lot of stuff that has to be done, even if this is brought forth by a nonprofit organization. He has worked with, I believe he said, the Noon Lions before, and so there's still work to be done from the city standpoint, just like any other event. We've got to participate a little bit as far as, you know, our, our fire presence, police presence, and organizing industry, just like any other event that happens. But, and he also mentioned the five, the six month that he likes. So with July 4th, it's cutting it close. He says, if you say yes, they can do it that quickly. But we also talked about cooler weather, which, you know, he mentioned September...
On the packet here, it shows September 20th through the 22nd, or October 18th through the 20th.
Right.
Is that the only time the tether balloon is available? Or is this not a true...
I thought it was just a sample.
More of a sample, yeah.
Oh, just a sample?
Yeah.
For the proposal?
No.
No.
Yeah, this is just a sample he sent us to get an idea of what he would...
So this is very premature.
Right, right. Perfect. He mentioned, we talked about September the 6th, those three days, 6, 7, 8, or November, even toward the end of November because of the cooler weather. Where we are, that's still good weather, you know, a lot of people in the north, that's already cold, and here it'd probably be good. He did mention the Fourth of July would be good because you attach to something, but then you also have the heat to deal with during that time. And so I just wanted to give you all kind of the information that, that he, he passed on to me, is I could pass on to you back to him.
Okay, so did we, has this gentleman looked at our location? And he knows the power lines and our wind blows and all that?
Yeah, I mean, he's, he's looked at, at where we are.
All I can think of is Lockhart, 16 dead, Egypt, 19 dead, and I think liability to a city. I, I personally wouldn't feel like the city, as Mr. Chris said, that's, on my part, liability is big. The cut to the pilot is 72%, the cut to the, in this... The cut to the pilot is 72 percent, the cut to the, in this case, that were discussed in the city, 28 percent, according to his documents, unless that's false too.
Well.
I mean, I'm going by the packet that was presented.
Right.
So, I mean, and then we say the balloon rides, so, the balloon rides are $250 each for the non-tether, so that's kind of costly for a family to go and pay $250, okay? And then the tether rides are a little more reasonable, and that's why I was asking the dates on that, because that's a little cheaper, it seemed like. $15, $20 for adults, $15 for kids, which that would be, you know, a cool thing, but the dates are on here, but I guess that's false too, or that's not real, but whatever.
No, that was just a sample proposal, but to give us an idea of what it would be and what the numbers could look like, you know, the, yeah, the, I think what he was talking about twenty balloons, it would be three tether, and the rest would be the commercial flights, yeah.
Okay. So, so the cut is an issue, and the liability is a huge issue. As a city, I would not think that council would like to take on that liability. We also have a Navy pilot that flies to our own airport, so this could not be a Fourth of July thing, because we're only, this would be a year process, I would think, to start planning and start, you know, doing all of this.
This balloon has over 28 years of doing this, and.
I know. So one who crashed had 28 years.
But, and there's, like, whether the insurance that the pilots carry and the non-stick holders and the policy.
Well, they have a waiver that states very clearly they are not responsible for anything, which would bring the city responsibility. I mean, if you sign the waiver, that's it, they're releasing all of their liabilities, so that means it would fall on the city. Some way, somehow, it would still fall on the city. So, I mean, it's a great thing, but I feel that the city, again, is not a party planner. We got out of that, and I feel that we don't have, our staff is tight, I mean, we have people that run all hours of the night, and it's, I mean, from PD to water to, and I just wouldn't, I would feel like that's a burden on our city staff, but it would be awesome if somebody else would pick it up and take the liability and all that other responsibility with it. Mr. Malina?
I'd have to agree with you guys. I'm reading the release and, yeah, and then just about the city kind of, you know, getting involved in that. I mean, if they, maybe if somebody else would pick it up and come in here like everybody else and get their, you know, their, you know, the minimum, whatever, I don't know, it's kind of put that out there, especially from a liability standpoint, that's all.
How would you be more comfortable with a new organization?
I think it's a great idea.
I think it's good, just to get the feedback.
Yeah, just to put it out there.
I wanted to kind of see what feel we had and anything else concerned.
And another organization, we could definitely, I mean, hot funds, we could definitely, you know, because then they could provide, you know, do the music and everything that's legal to do, but like what they're asking for, we would have to cover it, so we'd be ending up 32K.
Well, yeah, and then just to be clear, he's not asking, he's not, yeah, but he's not asking for this, he's just.
Saying that's potentially.
Yeah, and this is what it is, and the conversation that we've had with TM, and especially today, was the city's not necessarily in this, in this business or not in this business, so having worked with other, like nonprofits, and he said, yeah, you know, we did the Noon Lions, okay, that's something that has potential, so that was a conversation today, but I wanted to get some numbers, because if somebody's interested in this, there could be return on it. I mean, but it'd have to be, you know, I've put some numbers to it, and, you know, $32,000, somebody would have to put up front, and with the potential of, depending on how many cars, to break, to break even, they'd have to have 400 cars a day for the three days. And, you know, you have the, they would get to the 25% of the tethering and the 20% of the commercial flights and the miscellaneous revenue, the sponsorship.
72 is the price.
Pardon?
According to his document, 72 is to the pilot, 28 to the event.
Yeah, we, well, and we were talking about general numbers, 20%, 25. We were just, these are general. So, the sponsorship, so, we needed, somebody would need to be able to get about $4,000 in sponsorship for it to work, but it's out there, I mean, if somebody's interested in trying to.
Talk to the camera, sir.
Yeah.
Talk to the camera.
It has potential, but there is that initial investment somebody would need to make, yeah.
That'd be cool for somebody else.
But thank you for bringing it forward, Timmy. I think that if some, if they're aware that we can support something like that, I think it's a good, I think it's a good thing to bring it forward. If somebody wants to bring it forward, come on and see us, we'll put you in touch with, what was the guy's name?
Pat.
Pat, we'll hand you off to Pat.
Hardfield.
Yeah. We'll hand you off to Pat.
Yeah.
Counsel, I'll link your motion at this time. No action? No action taken on the item Agenda Number 13, no action taken. Okay, Agenda Item Number 13, your presentation from the Allos Fire Department regarding lease and our purchase of our.
Mayor Patrick Thomas is going to do a quick, just, presentation on. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Over the past several months, staff has been evaluating our current fleet of fire trucks, and we've been trying to identify what our current needs are, what the department needs are, what the city's needs are. And through this process, we've identified that we're at the point where we need to start looking at replacing the fire truck. There's a couple of objectives that we're trying to accomplish by doing this, and that's, we want to replace, obviously replace the aging equipment, trucks that we're looking at, or the truck that we're looking at, it's over 25 years old. The reason we want to do that is, obviously, the older a truck gets, the more things are going to break on it, the more stuff is going to start to go wrong with the truck, so maintenance costs start to go up. So we want to eliminate some of those maintenance costs or lower some of the maintenance costs. You're always going to have those costs, but we want to try to, we're replacing with a new piece of equipment. The other objective that we'd like to meet is also, we're looking at, and we've got a plan and a process that we're going to do, that we're going to start to carefully look at designing the truck strategically, to make sure that it's going to be designed to bring new capabilities to the south side of the town. This truck is going to be assigned to the south side station, and on that side of town, the truck that's currently there, we're kind of limited on what its capabilities are because of the way it was designed, so we're going to try to improve that and bring some better capabilities to the south side. The other thing that we'd like to do is also improve the safety of our firefighters. 25 years, safety features and safety measures on trucks, just like on our personal vehicles have come a long way, same thing with the fire trucks. There are a number of safety features that are available on newer trucks that are going to make our firefighters a little safer. We're working with finance very closely to prepare some, an option, or some options for you guys to consider in the near future, so we just wanted to update you guys and let you know, that y'all know what we're doing and where we're going with that. Thank you for your time.
And also just to let you know that from talking to Patrick, the spec-ing out a truck, the thought process is going to be, let's make sure we have a truck that is less likely to break. It doesn't need to be very fancy. At times, we've bought trucks that have fancy equipment and ends up not working, or electrical problems, and we're having to repair those, and the thought process and the planning, when we come to you with a truck, is we've thought about all these things. We want to make sure that, you know, it's safe, it's a good truck, but it doesn't have things that we don't need that are going to cause problems for us in the future.
Efficient. We want an efficient piece of equipment that operates for a long time.
Now, Mr. Smartson, would this, these come from the same company as the PD cars that we're looking at?
Uh, no, I mean, we've been talking with Roland and finance about that, but we probably look into something a little bit different with this one.
Are those available, with their company as well?
Uh, I think so. I think so, yeah.
I believe so, the terms of the fire truck lease is usually a bit longer than a smaller vehicle, it's a bigger purchase, so, Roland, that's a.
A loaded question.
Rolled in question, and we're going to bring you guys some options in the future, so we'll discuss those then.
Is that we have a package, maybe, maybe cars?
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Agenda Item Number 14, your presentation from the Allos Police Department regarding statistics for fourth quarter and yearly cost of service, arrests and citations, information within the city of Dallas.
Attorney General, Police Department, Ted is going to miss presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. This is the number that will be presented, the quarterly stats for October through December of 2018, and the yearly stats for 2018. The Patrol Division, the Patrol Division is consisted of one lieutenant, two sergeants, four co-cops, 20 officers. The primary duties of the Patrol Division is to respond to calls for service and be proactive in detering crime activity. Other duties consist of active investigation, traffic enforcement, and responding to medical emergencies. The Patrol Division is considered the backbone of the Police Department and are the true definition of the responders, first responders, as they are often first on scene at any occasion, any situation. Cost per service, the quarter, the cost per service were 3,641. The total for the year was 14,196. In add-on arrests for the quarter of October to December were 260. The total for the year was 1,045. Juvenile detentions for the quarter were 59, for the year were 176. Citations and warnings, we had citations for October were 159 and 175. November were 133, warnings were 191. Citation in December were 108, warnings were 195. Were a total of 861 for the quarter. For the year, citations were 1,561, and warnings were 1,719. Were a total of 3,280 for the year. The Criminal Investigation Division, the Criminal Investigation Division CID consists of one lieutenant, three sergeants, investigators, one co-cop. The primary duties of the CID officers consist of responding to calls for service where investigative techniques are needed and go beyond the scope of the Patrol Division. Other duties range from interviewing victims of crimes, interviewing suspects, drafting affidavits for search and arrest warrants, and executing set warrants. The Criminal Investigation Division works closely with the other divisions within the department, as well as other local, state, and federal agencies. October, they had assigned 233 cases. 29 of those cases were referred to the District Attorney's Office. 42 cases were referred to the County Attorney's Office. 20 cases were referred to Municipal Court. Seven cases were closed, referred to Juvenile Probation Office. Five cases were cleared exceptionally. One case was closed unfounded, and 226 cases were closed with three arrests for October. For November, they had 243 cases assigned. 18 cases were closed, referred to DA's office or District Attorney's Office. 49 cases were closed, referred to the County Attorney's Office. 23 cases were closed, referred to Municipal Court. 21 cases closed and referred to Juvenile Probation. 10 cases cleared by exceptionally. 122 cases were closed and three arrests for November. For December, they had 142 cases assigned. Six cases were closed, referred to the DA's office. 18 cases referred to the County Attorney's Office. 16 cases referred to Municipal Court. 19 cases referred to Juvenile Probation. Five cases cleared exceptionally. 40 were unfounded, 23 which is assists. 76 closed and zero arrests for December. For the year, they had 3,086 cases assigned. 300 of those cases went to the DA's office. 627 cases went to the County Attorney's Office. 183 cases went to Municipal Court. 167 cases went to Juvenile Probation Office. 108 cases were cleared exceptionally. 40 were unfounded, 23 which is assists. Closed cases were 1,634 and 14 arrests for the year. Special Crimes Unit, the Special Crimes Unit consists of one sergeant investigator, one patrol officer, one sergeant interdiction officer. The primary duties of the Special Investigate, Special Crimes Unit is to deter, interrupt, and dismantle and orchestrate distributions within the city of Dallas and surrounding areas. They also assist the Criminal Investigation Divisions on call-backup duties and respond to investigative calls, call-outs as needed. The Allos Police Department works with local law enforcement agencies such as Yumaus County, Doha County, Rose County, along with also assistance state and federal agencies when their calls are. In October, the Special Investigative Unit had 34 cases assigned. Nine cases were closed and referred to the DA's office. One case was closed and referred to the County Attorney's Office. One case closed, referred to Municipal Court. Zero cases closed and referred to Juvenile Probation. Eight cases cleared by exceptionally. Zero arrests, zero citations, 207 warnings. In November, they had 28 cases assigned. Five cases closed, referred to the DA's office. 16 cases closed and referred to the County Attorney's Office. Zero cases closed and referred to Municipal Court. One case closed, referred to Juvenile Probation Office. Four cases cleared exceptionally. One arrest, zero citations, nine warnings. For December, they had 48 cases assigned. 17 cases closed, referred to the District Attorney's Office. 18 cases closed and referred to County Attorney's Office. Two cases closed and referred to Municipal Court. Four cases closed, referred to Juvenile Probation Office. Zero arrests, zero citations, nine warnings. And they seized two vehicles, so for the year, they had 126 cases assigned to them, and 41 of those cases went to the DA's office. 36 went to the County Attorney's. Four went to Municipal Court. Six went to Juvenile Probation. 19 arrests, 23 citations, 273 warnings, two vehicles seized, and 16,943 monies were In 2018, they picked up 1.5 ounces of cocaine, 0.2 grams of heroin, 26.5 ounces of marijuana, and 1.5 ounces of synthetic marijuana. Any questions?
Counsel, Mr. Malina? Mr. Smartson?
Yeah, just one, what was so special about October with your, your Special Crimes Unit, that they issued 207 warnings in one month? Because the two after that were like nine, and it was only 270-something for the year. So what happened, I mean, why does something like that happen if they issued that? I mean, that just seems very skewed a number. I mean, that's something maybe you can look into for us and just let us know later on, but I mean, to go from nine, nine, 207, and the rest of the year, we only have 71, so, that'd be something to look into for you, please.
Would that be like the time, meaning like the dates?
I mean, October, that's when, you know, things changed, PD.
Well, I mean, but nonetheless, even if they change that month, you would figure that something's going on the next month. I mean, I mean, before or after it, it's still in the tens, because we've got 11 months that only would have average of seven warnings. You know what I mean? So I'm just questioning if that number's correct.
It is.
What page are we?
Uh, looks like 130 for October, and then if you go two pages later, you know, the total warnings for the whole year was like 273, so it just seems kind of skewed.
So majority were done in October.
Yeah.
And nothing else January through October, right?
No, it would have left.
There's 207.
71.
Less money.
53 for the rest of the year?
So, 225 in a quarter, and the year was 273, so, and 48 the rest of the year? Wait, wait, 225 in one quarter, and 48 from January through October.
Well, it's just that one month that seems skewed, it seems.
Job well done. Very good. Any other questions?
Just had one question, Chief. So, the only difference between the criminal investigation division and the special crimes unit is special crimes is narcotics pretty much?
Uh-huh.
Right, okay.
And highway deduction.
Okay.
The highway deduction, yes, yes, sir.
Got it, okay. And then as far as case closed being deferred or referred to, like, the DA, county attorney, those are basically just, they're ready to be processed, pretty much. Awesome. Good job, thank you.
Any other questions, sir?
No questions.
You don't happen to have the numbers for 2017 on drugs?
No.
If you didn't get that, for me, that'd be pretty, because I have seen a huge influx of you guys working really hard, doing a great, great job, and I commend you and your whole department, because I've seen it, and it's awesome to see that. But I do have a question that maybe I'm not understanding. So, let's just take, for example, December 2018, we have 48 cases assigned, and, no, that's okay, let's look at, okay, so, 34 cases assigned, zero arrests, zero citations, that's the 207 warnings.
October 18th.
28th, right? So, so it goes to, like, okay, so once a case is closed, that district attorney or county attorney, municipal court, JP, okay, so it goes there. What would be the flip side? Because we can see that all these are closed, so then we would see arrest, right? If they would find them guilty?
Right.
So, all of these cases assigned, we had zero out of 34, once they went to the DA's office, county attorney's office, municipal court. Am I correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And then we flip again, and it's, and what I'm seeing is, PD is doing a great job in doing the arrest and assigning cases, and then, correct me if I'm wrong, it goes away. Right? There's no arrest? I mean, that could be completely wrong, but I don't think I am. Right? Okay. Because we go right here, zero arrests, 142 cases assigned, six went to the DA, 18 went to county attorney, 16 went to municipal court, 19 to juvenile probation. Seven just were just gone, 40 were founded, zero arrests.
Yeah, I mean, we had cases of a penny left over from a previous investigator, so we had to have those cases assigned and distribute into the other division, so they can help out, because there was several cases.
Because once they're closed, they're closed, right? I'm trying to follow the education, I appreciate this. I would see it before, and I'm like, surely that's not right? But it is right. So, they're going to these higher offices, and, nothing, right? Okay. Because closed, cases are closed, that's it, they're done, and exceptionally, it's basically declined the case, they didn't take it. Wow.
Right.
Well, good job, Chief, you're doing a really, really great job. I appreciate, I can really see the difference in our, in our public safety, since you've come on board and updated.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, agenda item number 15, adjourn, I'm not considering, I have to adjourn now.
I'm looking to adjourn.
On my favor.
All right.
The time is now 8:21. Thank you all for your time and for being with us today, here and at home. Good night. This is my last call.